Good.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, 6:00 PM tonight, we will begin this evening calling to order a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2021 appropriations ordinance for the village of Chatham. Anyone would like to comment, speak to the $26.4 million appropriation ordinance from the public? Now is the time. What do you have going on?
Does that appropriation include any street work?
Yes, sir.
I'm here because I've lived on Glen Drive for 36 years. And a 200 block is shot.
Of Glen?
So I've been locked in oil one time since I went there 36 years.
Of Glen Drive, is that what you said? Sorry, we're getting used to hearing people through masks. Did you say 200 block of Glen?
Yes. Where they joined to put the new addition on. Is one big pile all the way across and it's been that way since day one. They just keep adding paths to it and making it worse and making it work. That 200 block needs to be reserved.
Is it oil and chip now or is it asphalt?
It's an asphalt chip, I think.
All right. We'll get somebody out there to look at it and see what the... So you've got that.
I've got one other question behind.
Yes, sir.
When we took out the old, the last railroad crossing on Spur Street.
Yes, sir.
They forgot to take down the four-way stop signs. So now we've got four-way stop for two dead-end streets. That's proof.
Okay, thank you.
Dewberry at the end of Glen now has traffic that's doing all the way up 50 mile an hour. They've had a couple speed signs up there because of it. I'd like to recommend a four-way stop there. That's a bus stop for three buses coming and going every day. The school is down and it's dangerous.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else comments on the public hearing? Hearing none, we consider the public hearing closed. We call the order and bring a regular village board meeting. Y'all please join me in a moment of silence. And a pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Mal.
Here.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Churchill.
Present.
Villas President Kimsey.
Present, thank you. Any public announcements this evening? We got a couple from the village. Today was Mike Gorsuch's last day on the job as our village mechanic. So after 31 years, we want to wish Mike well and off into whatever wild adventures you can get into in a time of a pandemic. We certainly appreciate that many years of dedication in the village. Mike, we miss him, he's been a great asset, helped us keep a lot of vehicles on the road for a lot of years. Also Officer LaScoti and his wife Tori, welcome to baby boy into the world on July 11th. So congratulations to the LaScoti family. Are there any public comments this evening regarding agenda topics? There are no additional public comment. Entertain a motion, bring the consent agenda to the table.
Make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Charo, any discussion regarding the minutes or the warrants?
Just a quick question back to the new swings that I saw awards, do you know where they're going?
I do not. I guess, I'm gonna take a long guess and say where a broken one is. Those guys, those guys order that stuff, I...
I thought it was community park.
Thank you, Trustee Detmers.
All right, any additional? Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
It's not gonna get old either. For those watching at home, some mics are hotter than the other in this new setup that we're in. No old business under new business. Item one is an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2020 and on the 30th day of April 2021. Could I have a motion to bring appropriations to court?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mann has made a motion to adjourn. Second by Trustee Detmers, we have any discussion? Hearing none, I think.
I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this and staff has spent a lot of time putting this together, so I want to say thank you for that effort. I know this has been an odd year to put together the budget with everything. I think it speaks to all the work that's been done over the last several years. And being in this moment we're in, I know there'll be ongoing discussion going forward. And with that said, I appreciate the conversation, President Kimsey, that we've had and talking about, and with Pat on the goals for the village going forward. I know we've had a performance audit now, we've had a comprehensive plan, we have, they've had a parks comprehensive plan. So I think we've had a lot of great information for us as a body to make decisions. One aspect going forward that I think would be important too, that constituency that we have has not been kind of polled or surveyed, and that is also our colleagues in the process going forward. I know that's something we can continue talking about, to also incorporate that input going forward as well. So I look forward to that, to share all the discussion, but just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, this year, insurance done a good job. Over the last five weeks, we've kind of explained the process with this budget in a wildly unusual year. I don't think this is the last time we touch our budget this year. There are, there's $550,000 worth of capital funds that were passed in the state budget. That revenue and any projects associated with that is not yet appropriated in this. We don't know the specifics of how it's going to be allocated or when, so that's not in here as well yet. There's an additional $473,000 in local cure funds that are allocated to the village of Chatham that the Department of Commerce and Economic Community, Opportunity, are still determining what their rules are going to be on what is reimbursable and what's a qualifying expense on that. So there's some additional there, and of course, the conversation continues on the federal level on what the next level of their response is going to be from the federal. And a lot of those discussions do include direct to municipality aid. So more than any year in particular, I view this as, this is the start. We're gonna watch this a lot closer than we have and probably have to address it at the board again at some point. Appreciate it.
As those additional funds come in, I'd like to see some of the capital projects that the Public Properties Commission had identified, you know, look to fund some of those. I think some of them were on park improvements to the bicycle path and other park improvements. So I would like to see as those funds come in and as we look to appropriate a new budget, then those items be considered.
Yeah, and then part of that strategy that we've been discussing all along is not move to name those capital projects yet until see, see what kind of qualifiers are coming along with any of those. So we get the appropriate ones and not pursue something we shouldn't be pursuing this year.
But that's where in those subcommittees like last night, it's important to know when you guys sit down and you come out of there that you have a clear cut that we want this one first and this one second. So if those funds become available, it's in our plans and everything else, those are the ones that will move on then.
We have provided that list of priorities and we determined it again last night.
Yeah.
Those studies and all the planning that Paul referenced in his comments, those are the things that are making us eligible for a lot of these things who previously weren't. A lot of effort going into getting to this point and being able to get through an unusual year with a pandemic going on and still be in the strong position that the village is in. Certainly appreciate all that effort. Hearing nothing else, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
No.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Item two under new business is a resolution approving and authorizing the village to enter, enter an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for animal control services. Could I motion to bring this to the table? Trustee Detmers, second by Trustee Churchill. This is the annual renewal of the agreement with Sangamon County Animal Control. Cost is based on prior usage, you see that number is $2,933.9. Questions or discussion regarding? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution approving and authorizing the village to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for regional transportation planning and related activities. Do I have a motion? Trustee Churchill, second by Trustee Detmers. This is our annual agreement with the Regional Planning Commission in cooperation with the city of Springfield and Sangamon County, as well as other various authorities who also in that group. SMTD, IDOT, Federal Highway Administration. This is the group that executes the local roads planning and the Sangamon area transportation study in membership. Pat is a member of the technical committee on this and I'm a member of the policy committee on that. Somewhere getting close to my end is my term as chair, which is all right as well. So any further discussion or questions regarding? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
All right, any additional public comments regarding any village business at this time? Seeing as we have four minutes before we can start the committee, if you have comments that you were going to direct toward the committee, now is also a great time to give us, otherwise we have to sit here and wait for four minutes, so.
Are you saying you would have?
I, I would, I would suggest that if you had a committee comment that you would like to make, now would be a great opportunity to go ahead and make that, if it fits appropriately into where we are in our agenda.
Would you like to say anything?
My name is Jerry Kessler, I live in Manor Hill. I'm here to speak on the golf carts. For, for some time now, I've been talking to a lot of people about trying to make golf carts, or channel golf cart community. And by and large, people seem to support it, they seem to like the idea. There are a number of reasons why they should do it. When the state of Illinois first allowed golf carts, or first allowed municipalities to govern themselves on allowing golf carts, there was language that prevented crossing state highways. And there's been no chapter out for it, and I'm trying to milk it down, so you know, it was, I mean, 10 or 12 years ago, I don't know, the thing else the Board might need to have then, but the reason the village board voted it down then was because of, like I said, language permitting crossing state highways. They have since changed that to allow crossing state highways at intersections where the speed limit is very far apart from the last. If it's under 55 miles per hour, they can cross at stoplights. In Chatham, we hit all those markers, parts given as 30 miles an hour all the way through till the plumber, and of course, there's a stoplight there, and we have a stoplight at Manchester Road, which leads from Chatham to Springfield into a golf cart community. So we now, we hit all the markers, and I think it's, it's a representative for the village. And I'd like to see you guys discuss it, and I look forward to it.
Do you have any? Do you have any proposals with respect to other transportation, like ATVs or Daters or three wheeler?
So the, 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 this is a question for you, but there are limitations for most new vehicles. You have to have, I mean, certainly have, at least 50 years old, have a driver's license. You have to have turn signals at once when you allow.
And the draft ordinance that the, the great repair force and I sent everybody, it's got their...
No, I read it, I was just asking if Mr. Kessler had any suggestions with respect to this opinion? I read the proposed ordinance.
I think this, the ordinance is what would provide the law, anything above that?
Maybe I should clarify, the ordinance is based on the state statute, and it allows specifically for golf carts, but the state statute allows you carve out various different modes of transportation.
Right.
So I've done side by sides, I've found ATVs.
Right.
So it's allowed, but the ordinance you're looking at is golf carts only.
Right, that's, yeah, but that's why I clarified, because I read both the state and the proposed, and I noticed that those were called out, like so popular.
Personally, I don't see why it would make a difference. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, damaged the roads, you know. Perhaps there might be a noise concern with an ATV or something like that, but we already have restrictions on festival levels in the village anyways. So as long as you don't receive that, I don't see why it makes a difference. For me, it's a, it's a, it's a philosophical question. You know, I don't think that, you know, we're founded on civil liberties and all that crap, so I really don't personally see why we should be restricted on that. Surely arguments can be made against it, but that's what you guys should worry about. I have a question. Is it required to have a license plate?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or you register?
Part-time registration.
Street legal with respective turn signals, windshield, headlights.
Oh, like main, second, or something.
Right.
Well...
All right, so not, not to cut you too short, we've reached your five minutes.
Would you mind trading with one of the, either of you two gentlemen like to speak now?
No, I'm just about to let someone else come in.
Okay. You want to speak? Huh? For the golf carts, okay. Thank you. Send the two of them in there, okay?
We appreciate that, we appreciate you guys understanding the uniqueness of how many people can be in here.
What's to speed in a golf cart?
The golf cart is doing...
What?
The ordinance that we have comprised is, it says, I don't want to agree.
But it could change, right?
You've been making forwards. When you want, tell the last guy come on. Thank you.
Usually if your ATVs that are, if you get a bad speed.
So right there on the...
Right.
Which aren't loud and for all.
All right, so anybody else would like to give public comments? We're taking those at this point in time.
Public comment on the golf carts or anything else?
Sure.
Yeah, if you, if you're looking to speak, now is the time.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll cut you off the rest of the... You're fine, just talk loud.
It should be a great light.
Yeah, I, I know that there's a lot of communities in the area that I've talked to, that like the Palm Springs, the Auburns, I think, I think Giraffe has it. And what, it, it actually makes them profit as well, the city as well, with the registrations and the things of that nature. And, you know, we've, we've had some discussions as well, me and my wife, and, you know, with this COVID situation, it actually brings our neighborhoods closer together, you know, the chance to go say hi to your neighbor. And just be able to, to speak and, because everybody's waving, you know, especially during this time. You gotta, you just want the closeness, and it's just easier to get to a spot instead of driving in a car. That's all it is. So it's, it's just convenient, it's not, so. My thing is, you know, it's doing that, and it's giving the chance for the, the village of Chatham to make some profit as well.
Sir, can I get your name?
My name is Bruce.
Bruce Keel.
Thank you.
Play the game of trying to recognize everybody behind the door. And John Fletcher's got the best...
Yes, I like that. I saw that you can have those made for you, like I'm yelling.
Oh.
Speak loud.
My name is John Fletcher, I'm a school teacher here in Chatham. And the only reason I believe this is something awesome for our community, my goal in this community is to build the best community for our kids to live in. I'm fortunate to be able to be inside of a school to impact that area. I'm in a school district to impact that area. I get to travel a lot because I'm fortunate to have family in other places, and there's golf carts there. When I go there, this is what I see. When I'm in my classroom, one of the biggest things that I try to do with my kids is to get a walk down the hallway and get the other kids in the hallway to smile by doing nothing else than doing this. You don't get to do anything but smile. And for instance, I was in Arizona about five weeks ago, and it's a community of 5,000 people. Almost every kid from being there has a golf cart. And I would take my little kids, sit on the golf cart, and we would just drive around. And their only job while we drove around was to wave at people. And it made everyone smile. Now, unfortunately, in the time that we're at, wearing these masks, sitting apart from each other, we don't have that sense of community that we used to have, that's why we live here. Nobody lives here to pay these high taxes and shop in cases. We live here because we care about each other, we care about people, we care about our kids. One thing that I see that golf carts can add is for all of us to be a little bit closer. We get to see that sense of community, we get to wait. We may not be able to talk in each other's driveway, but we can wait and we talk and we visit. And my kids can go visit his kids and your kids, and, and that's where I see a sense of community built by the golf carts. I don't know enough to know if they're good or bad, I haven't even done the research. All I know is everywhere I've gone that has golf carts, is a whole lot of people who smile and have a lot of fun because they're out with a golf cart. Want to go to bank? That's just my own personal opinion. I appreciate you guys giving me five, five minutes to talk about it. Appreciate whatever you guys decide. Thank you for your time, thank you for being here and the time to wear masks and take time away through your family. So thank you, guys, I'll go back and sign with the other men. Thanks, guys.
Is there still more there? Want to go ahead?
He said, he said he was kidding.
Joe's coming back. Sorry, I forgot I wanted to break something up. I live on the main drag of Hurstborn, and it's...
Give us your name, Joe.
My name's Joe Smith, I live on Hurstborn. And I know that there's a lot of speeding going on through Hurstborn, because I see it firsthand every day my kids are outside. I just had a thought, man, when we put a stop sign, I mean, I don't mind if it's close to my house. I know my neighbor's not excited about the stop and start sound by the house, but to be honest, I just really like it that they're slowing down right. I'm at 2204, so I'm right before the Esport in Hurstborn. So I'm thinking like Hurstborn and, that's not Huntington, Huntington. I mean, I, I feel like that's a good spot after driving through the neighborhood 100 times a week, you know. And I don't know, there's a lot of kids on Hurstborn, there's a lot of bikes, nobody slows down, there's a lot of kids doing this, you know, I just feel like it's, I mean, Wreckin Ridge has two of them, Goldenrod has two of them, Hurstborn has none, so I feel like we can stand to have one.
Any additional tonight? Hearing none, ours scheduled meeting, there is no planning commission meeting on July 16th, there's no business. Utility oversight subcommittee scheduled for 7:00 PM on July 20th. Village Board will meet again at 6:00 PM on July 28th. The final police commission meeting September 16th at 5:30. We'll do closed sessions at the end of the committee. Chairman Gerger, don't forget that. And having no other business for the board, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second, which one?
Trustee Gerger's made a motion, Trustee Charo's second, and if all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Board meeting stands adjourned. Chairman Gerger, you're up. Call the order and roll the call, please.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Mal.
Here.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Churchill.
Here, present.
I have any further comments on agenda topics? I think we got them anyway. Can I motion to bring the consent agenda forward?
A motion.
Trustee Detmers, second by...
Second.
Trustee Charo, discussion on that? All was in favor?
Aye.
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 Oohs. Ayes have it. New business, same team engineering update.
Okay, a couple items. First of all, I know I heard a couple of comments related to wanting stop signs in town. Just to bring everyone up to speed on that, you know, I'm trying to be an A say or anything else like that, but so there are specific requirements for stop signs. They can't just be put out there at the whim of speeding or, you know, at the discretion of a municipality just because there has to be engineering studies associated with it that's backed either in capacity issues or accident data associated with stop signs. So, you know, I know many municipalities have just arbitrarily put up stop signs. People have contested that in court. Actually, I remember one in Chicago where they decided to just put up stop signs everywhere. A particular alderman just decided to run all of them until he got pulled over and then just did the same. So there are guidelines for manual uniform traffic control devices that give precedence for the installation and/or removal of stop signs, so.
Have we done the traffic study on Hurstborn? I know I've seen that police thing where it mentions speed, but have we done?
The traffic count?
Yeah.
Not a lot. We usually do that in conjunction with county. I'd like to touch base with them and find out if they're...
Because since they're over in Manor Hill too, I have enough the traffic is even heavier now.
Yeah.
Or there.
What sort of things would work?
Well, number of cars, capacity, conflict with cars, you know, you may have a two-way stop or the side road stop, main road goes through, you know, if the later cars are backing up on the side roads, presence of accident data. There's a handful of criteria there that, that warrants stop signs, that's why they call it warrants. But it just provides the village with a legal background or basis for the installation and/or removal of a stop sign, because it does also cause problems too. So, of course, vehicles stop, you know, middle of the street, you know, there's issues there as well. So in all my engineering experience, it's always been one of those deals where it's hard to get a stop sign there unless it's really warranted. Speeding is not a valid requirement for installation of stop signs, so. You know, it's something that you guys can do to add, if we want to look into it further, but just so you know that there is some science engine behind it, that's not just a grab a pole aside.
There, there was another citizen that asked for, did ask me to try to get one in Dewberry and Glen somewhere for that gentleman earlier, and I think it would help if we had that explanation given to the... Because that, I just heard, no, he didn't hear any, just logic or justification as to why, why it was known, so he continues to reach out to me, so. I think it would just make sense if we had verbiage written up that said, you know, this intersection doesn't qualify or, you know, this won't go there or whatever, but.
What about a speed bump?
Glen, no, we don't do that.
No.
I get asked for speed bumps, I have to.
When you put a speed radar in Hurstborn, there has been...
And also on Dewberry and Glen. But in Glen, there just isn't enough people that live on Glen to justify having... Yeah, again, he, he sent pictures and shared his concerns, and I want to make sure that those concerns are addressed, you know, to the extent possible.
Chief, does the trailer still count? Doesn't the trailer count cars?
Yeah.
So we, we have a quasi where it counts, because it gives a time too, doesn't it?
So, yeah, it is, you know, time-based, you know, one of the factors is called a peak hour count, so times the vehicles are there during the, it's a peak hour during a day, and then what kind of plays are associated with that. So just general rule of thumb, if you're not seeing cars backed up around the street, chances are it's not going to qualify for a stop sign.
It's a big, no problem.
It's, it would be pretty obvious if...
It's, it would be pretty obvious if it's a capacity issue. Then the other issue is, uh, accident data, which, you know, we can pull accident data from the village in terms of, you know, are there any crashes or, you know, other issues associated with, you know, uncontrolled intersection? And, uh, you know, see what happens with that. But, uh, it's, it is tough to get a stop sign warranted at a particular location just because of the stringency of the requirements. So I'll pull those together, provide those to Pat and share with you guys.
What about as small children's planes? How do they get that?
We usually put those other people in the woods and there's not a...
Do we know those studies were done for Breckenridge? They get two stop signs in Breckenridge.
That I do not know.
They don't have traffic backed up.
Now, so, sometimes the stop signs are put up at the very, very beginning when it's designed.
Right.
And,
okay.
You know, and that, that might be why those stop signs are there. But if, if the village has gone back out, we usually try to...
Um, number one that was brought, that spoke with Pat and, uh, Brian Crawford was, uh, drainage issues related with Hopebrook subdivision behind Pleasant Park. Uh, Ryan and I stopped out there on Monday, uh, spoke with, uh, one of the residents there that, uh, you know, has concerns with the, uh, with the drainage, uh, that's out there. I talked to him at length in terms of what's, what's going on, what is he observing, what is he seeing? And, uh, it is his opinion, uh, and experience, uh, being out there that it's a maintenance issue. Uh, there's an existing concrete swale that drains through the back that, uh, most of that has been silted in. Uh, there's an area that, that he has cleared himself, um, that he's maintaining a portion of this area. And, uh, but there is still quite a bit of, uh, long grass debris, weeds and so forth. And when you have a high rainfall, only goes through that area, it collects all of the tree branches, long grass debris, gets hung up on the grate of the outlet pipe there and then starts to back up. The pond there is of limited size and there isn't, uh, a very good overflow route through there. There's a portion of a rear yard concrete swale that takes everything to the east. But, uh, once that swale, which, you know, it's only about a foot deep, is, uh, capacity that's exceeded, then it runs into his backyard. So he says every time that he's seen to be a problem, it is a maintenance problem because it's debris, grass clippings, branches, uh, from the upstream tributary area. Part of that problem is related with the two open lots, Longport Drive, because the frequency in which they mow it, uh, you know, they leave it get up a foot, you know, eighteen inches, then they cut it. There's a lot of long grass that goes in the ditch, gets washed down and hugs up the, uh, hugs up the grave. The other one is the, uh, the channel itself has a lot of grass, dirt, debris in the channel. So, Ryan, uh, was going to reach out to the developer and have them, uh, clean that out and remove the debris. I guess last efforts to do that, so they simply just dumped it off to the side and it just gets washed in again. But, uh, he's going to reach out to the, um, developer and have that done because the homeowner said he was willing to maintain and mow that common area and keep it free of debris, but, uh, just needs it to a condition that he can actually get a mower in there and actually take care of it. And so, um, you know, a couple of things there, if we can get it cleaned up initially, I think it will resolve a lot of those issues. And then, uh, you know, he's able to maintain that. Plus, if those two lots are developed, that'll help, you know, the, the long grass. But, uh, I think it's more coordination with the developer and, uh, and also a horrible maintenance issue associated with that.
When you say developer, you're talking about the developer of Glendale, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So Glendale's drainage, after accumulating in the retention pond, is slowly released into Hopebrook's drainage system. It works its way through and then when it gets to Gordon Drive, it goes underneath, well, it goes along Gordon Drive, goes underneath a plumber, works its way over, uh, along, uh, the road that runs down the, uh, Spartan subdivision and then works its way into the lake. So, I think one of the, the gentleman called and realized that one subdivision has to work with another. We can't get drainage water from one side of town to the lake without all of them running together. But they're supposed to be held back at a certain point for so long to be able to go in there naturally instead of flat swells, so. Are, are we referring to, you know, Mr. Morocconi? Is that the gentleman?
Yeah, he was called.
Yeah. That we're referring to? He, he's emailed a number of times and I just wanted to make sure that he relayed to you that the, the swales didn't seem to line up between the two subdivisions and he thought that that was an oversight, sorry about my glasses, that was an oversight by the village allowing that development to, to do that where it seems as though some properties are pushed into other people's lands. Did, did you get, did you forward that email, Ryan, that, with all those pictures? By chance? And, and that, that instance happens a lot when, say for instance, one subdivision gets created, okay? They put in a concrete swale behind the houses, but they can't put it on the property line because they don't own the other side of the property, okay? So they pull their concrete swale back three to five feet.
Yep.
Then maybe the piece of farmland that's over here, that finally develops, they turn around and go to put their concrete swale in, okay? So they do the exact same thing. They don't have the right to go over on this guy's piece of property and pour concrete. Right, so there's... So they hold theirs back five feet. Between. Up between. And each landowner owns to the middle of that. A lot of times they don't maintain it anymore. They just let it go. But it's, it's what happens when subdivisions develop and then later another one comes in. The, the perfect solution would be you come in, tear off both of them, put one new concrete swale down the middle and each side is responsible for keeping it clean. And it would make for a better project, but the village doesn't own any of that. When you buy a house, you buy all the way to your property line and the drainage is part of your responsibility. So if those two subdivisions wanted to get together and work on solving that problem, you know, maybe with their homeowners association raising some money or something, they could hire somebody to come in there, cut a new concrete swale down the middle, take out the ones on the side and then take everything and take care of it. So... Yeah, for those of you that haven't seen it, this is what I'm referring to, just that large gap of land between the swales and we have those. Is this the silted in area that, that you were referring to earlier?
Well, the silted in area is actually the bottom of the pond itself, uh, where drains to the outlet. So my concern was not so much the rear yard drainage as that is, as described as the homeowners' responsibilities. It is more for the detention basin that overflows into adjacent properties. So, you have the detention area that's right directly behind Pleasant Park, uh, daycare nursery that flows to the north. And that collects all of the area, Longport Drive, um, that runs west, then goes north, then goes into a detention facility at that point. That concrete swale on the bottom of the ditch that goes directly in, into the detention facility and through the detention facility is full of debris, weeds, uh, actually snapping through a button, gave it around. Oh, yeah, um, but, uh, so there's, there's some maintenance issues there. So, you know, we're talking about the property owners where, you know, he's concerned about this pond fills up and the water has nowhere to go because all the weeds are blocking up the, uh, the outlet and then it overflows into his backyard.
Yeah, and my, my understanding was that he's not, he doesn't live in that general vicinity, but there was an older gentleman who does and he hurt his knee or something. So, I, I just wanted to make sure that, A, we're getting back to him because it seemed to, by his emails, that he was pretty frustrated and, and felt that the village was at fault to some, to some extent. So as long as we clearly communicated that that's not the case and you didn't have any...
I haven't talked to him, but I did email him.
The thing is, is Hopebrook has an active homeowners association. They take care of their problems and they take care of the right one. They've added new streetlights and stuff. They've raised the money for them and added them where there were sharp spots. If, if this was their problem, I think Hopebrook would fix it. The problem is it's Glendale and Glendale hasn't formed a homeowners association yet. So right now, the developer of that subdivision is, Ryan has made good contact with him to be able to try to take care of those problems. But in the future, it's going to happen again unless Glendale takes responsibility for their drainage ways. And we have that throughout the whole town, subdivision after subdivision. Awesome. Thank you guys for looking at it and, and assuming we're going to wrap it up with him and just send him a final email saying this is our position and opinion, right? That's the next final step, give him some guidance. Has he, again, you can back and forth his emails if you like, but he's, he's a little upset.
And, uh, moving forward with the, uh, M F T program for this year, uh, we actually are out of the contractors' bulletin for materials for concrete to continue on with the street patching. So, uh, that went on last Thursday and will go again this Thursday and then we'll have a bill due, uh, next week, uh, for concrete materials. Since we exceed the state, uh, limits for, uh, dollar amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for concrete. So, I'm convinced for that, we'll move forward with that program. Uh, I'd have to still run it a little bit slow, uh, in terms of approval of our program, but, uh, we've got some calls into them to hopefully get that kicked forward. Um, just a lot of their computer programs aren't accessible from outside, access points, so they have to physically be in the office and a lot of these guys are just trading ships back and forth. So, continue to work on that and, uh, get some maintenance, some roadway projects done. With that, that's all I have.
A question, um, with the, uh, have we started work with Chatham Township and the Rocky and oiling of various village roads and parking lots yet, or what would that be?
I don't think that's occurred yet. I know it's something that Barry handles directly, um, so other than getting the material lined up for them, uh, we're kind of out on the loop on that. Uh, so Village, Village crews handle that internally, but, uh, is there a particular area that you're concerned about or?
No, just I wasn't sure if the process of, well, had Rocky to oil up their township, I didn't know if we had worked with Chatham Township in the hill yet and, uh...
That I've not...
This year yet, no?
So on my side, is, is there any changes in the potential water for this, the current water situation near the J C shed and the electric? I know we're doing some land studies about, you know, what could be done temporarily versus the long-term ponds.
Yep, we're pulling together some pricing and, uh, we're working to get some estimates associated with that work so we have, uh, an idea of what those costs are. And then, uh, as, uh, Chris McKinsey had mentioned earlier, I mean, there are some funds out there that are available that, uh, you know, Chad has been appropriated for, you know, general improvements. Uh, that might be one that could be considered for some of that funding, um, that's appropriated but not yet assigned to the village. Uh, so just making sure that we have that information available if we have an opportunity to do that. But, uh, large hole, a lot of pipes, so, you know, it's trying to match that up with, uh, either someone that needs a lot of dirt or unexhausted, uh, you know, would allow us to, uh, reform this whole thing.
Okay, thank you. We didn't really need to lease that on our land.
We did not.
To the east. We're letting it go back to the natural for now.
Okay.
Thank you. For one, that'll help slow the flooding down.
Right, right.
Well, yeah, just, we just had that issue on the northeast, northwest side. I don't know that it could make it to that land without, you know, our intervention.
It's separated, so, you know, our west side kind of stays on the west side. Once it gets really high, then they come angle, but, uh, on the lower flows, they stay separated.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next, zoning variance request.
Brian's here with the gentleman that has the zoning variance request.
I, uh, had Mr. Brown, Tim Brown, come in to talk to you guys. You had any questions about, um, the, the variance request that he had? Um, very simply, what he's doing is, is building a garage, a two-car garage? Three-car garage, sorry. And it is going to be, um, built to, um, taller than seventeen feet because that's what's required in our zoning book, is that accessory buildings can be taller than seventeen feet. Uh, also, it, uh, the reason he's doing it is to match the roofline of the existing hunks and the aesthetics. And so I brought him here tonight just in case you guys had any questions about that. You'd be happy to answer those. And so I'll turn it over to Tim Brown.
But you might want to tell him that you had your zoning board appeals and...
Right. We, we went through the zoning board appeals. We had our meeting on July ninth and they did, um, so you spoke, so Mr. Brown spoke and I had, we had two other people speak basically in favor of it, uh, no one in opposition. And the zoning board appeals did vote fixed to nothing to approve. So...
The people that were in favor were the year neighbors?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have been recreational.
I just had one question. So I was looking at that, uh, document and it, there was this one, I'm guessing it's one of the two neighbors that just asked a question. Upon a question from the public, the petitioner testified that he intends to build a, uh, that it wouldn't, uh, oh, we're... It wouldn't be detrimental to a public welfare. And basically he, it matches the current design materials of it. So is that satisfactory?
Yeah, it's, it's going to match because it's a part of recreational subdivision, so it's going to have, it's got to match aesthetically everything that's in the house. The brick on the front, shake side and then the front of it, double four and the rest is...
And that neighbor was satisfied with that response?
Yeah. Um, and it, the, the difference in height is going from seventeen foot to twenty-one foot. It's still one-story building. It's just going to have the peak structure to match the garage that's right next door and right next to it. That way, if you're coming down the drive, you don't have one, the peak is different height than the peak that's part of the garage. They're just trying to make it look aesthetic.
I, you guys want to mention that I appreciate this summary provided by the really zoning board deals. I think we should look to do that in our other committees as well.
I got the template. This is helpful.
Well, yeah, I mean, we didn't have to ask many questions because it was already all...
Every member.
So thank you for the diligence there.
Yep. Any more questions?
We'll be in ordinance this, uh...
Yeah, trustee, it's your release. Get everybody to move that to the board. Get everybody to move that to the board meeting.
So we'll need a consensus to move that to the board meeting and have ordinance grant, grant it up. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
So the final vote, Tim, is two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, two weeks from tonight.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the golf cart discussion. Uh, so I brought this forward because I've had numerous, uh, citizens ask it and then my brother-in-law is involved in golf cart community and I, I agree with what the one gentleman said, it just makes it more of a community. And I haven't had any, um, I mean, company that were opposed to it, so I just wanted to bring it up in the discussion and see where everybody else is at. And I, and wanted to get burn input as well.
Right, that, that's my, that's my, I mean, I think obviously there's a lot of people that are interested in it. I just would like to see any concerns from the, yeah, police department and, and how we might be able to address those.
Well, I was unaware that a golf cart ordinance is going to be discussed, so it's kind of me, so bear with me. I've had, uh, no problem with it. The thing is, this was brought up, um, probably about seven, six years ago, seven years ago approximately, uh, the previous board. Um, so as far as what in the past, when you move forward, one of the concerns that I have is safety. That's, obviously that's my job is safety. So, you know, I can't speak the fact of, I think it's cool, I think it's neat, yeah, I think there's a time and place for golf carts. Um, I'm not, or I'm not against it, but if I had to lean one way, I'd be against it because golf carts are not built for safety. They are built for a golf cart community. Um, Springfield has golf cart community which is part of Glenn. But the reason for that is because it's one way in, one way out. There's no other way to get into Paragon other than the, the one entrance. Um, there are other communities, um, I did do a poll, um, that I can hand out to you as, as well, is we polled about fifty different communities, uh, based from ten thousand population up to eighteen thousand. I would say probably ninety, I think it's fair to say ninety percent of the people that we polled, the communities, um, they don't have a golf cart ordinance in place. Um, for whatever reason, they didn't get a specific reasons other than they didn't have a golf cart ordinance in place. As I said before, the biggest thing for me is safety. They're not built for safety. Um, if the village wants to entertain that as far as being a golf cart community, that's fine, but we need to definitely put a lot of, uh, rules and regulations in place. Um, dealing with rules and regulations, just like we know, we live on, you know, the interstate seventy mile an hour. You can go faster than seventy, you can go slower than seventy. People with rules and regulations, just like we know this, we live on, you know, the interstate seventy mile an hour, you can go faster than seventy, you can go slower than seventy. So expect that, if you do look to, you know, have that ordinance for a golf cart, there are gonna be people out there that will abide by the rules and there's gonna be people not abiding by the rules. There's gonna be people speeding, there's gonna be people not wearing seatbelts. I think for me, it's probably the safety thing as far as whether to cross route four or not across route four, which obviously is illegal. And probably just the side streets. There are subdivisions within the village's limits, Tiderville, P V, Tiderville, Police Department does have the golf cart ordinance, but it's only for certain parts of the city of Tiderville. I can see where parts of Chatham could use golf carts, when I say they're one-way in, one-way out, Irongate, LeRide, Ralph Forbes, Homewood Lane, Sweep Rire, those subdivisions there, one-way in, one-way out. So one thing I would definitely keep in mind and consideration is the safety aspect of it, they're not built for safety. As far as accidents, that's a major concern, because if there's an accident, it's likely it's getting in probably, probably more likely, serious injury or possibly a fatality. So that's probably my biggest issue as far as before we work.
Chief, so you said that one-way in, one-way out makes it for safer neighborhoods?
Well, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that, there's much, much less traffic in those neighborhoods. And also the fact is that you don't have that overflow, you know, I get to see a golf cart running down Harbor Boulevard, I think that's, that could be a major problem. I don't like, I don't want to see a golf cart running down Oak, I mean, you're making thoroughfares, that's, that's a concern.
The question why I asked that is because a few years ago, the fire chief came in here and he had an issue with the street over the line, he said that it was unsafe with kind of one-way in.
One-way in, one-way out.
So I have Jim left already, but I think what you'll get is in, in the building codes and in the subdivision codes, it's always encouraged. You have multiple access points in through a place and also the, kind of the complete streets concepts that is put out through the engineering code and through the subdivision codes there, kind of, that are more generally accepted. Has interconnection is one of the primary goals, so that you can transit from one subdivision into the next without constantly having to route everybody out to, say, Route Four. So if, if you had to get constantly from, you know, from point A to point B or C or D and every one of those routes required everybody to drive out to Route Four and then go to a single entrance, that's, it's traffic nightmare. Because you don't have the ability to go from one to another, so urban developments, urban development focuses on interconnection between subdivisions.
Right, you know, following the police teams, you know, it does provide some safety.
For golf carts.
And, and it's a community, it's a community aspect and to all the constituent concerns coming in here, if you want this to be a community close knit, and that's one aspect. I'm just saying that, you know, there's a room full of people a couple of years ago, because that was used as an excuse to not do a project in the neighborhood that I did. So it's just interesting to me.
I have a question, Chief, how did you choose the cities that you polled?
Based off the population, that was probably the biggest thing, population, because we try to cover, you know, communities the same size as us and communities larger than us.
Because I know many villages and cities around us have this ordinance. And I have heard, now after speaking with their police departments and vendors and cities, have had no issues with golf carts. You know, they have placards on the back, they have turn signals, they have horns, lights, all the safety features. And I mean, even with Al Owe, who was still being, he was still leaning towards against the golf carts.
He didn't say he was against it.
No, he said he leaned, if he had to lean one way or the other, he would lean against.
But he doesn't have to lean.
Well, that's what I'm asking him.
Is, 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 he was giving you some things that were drawbacks to it?
And I'm asking, and I'm asking him, based on what I just said, with those safety features, how he would lean, how he would be as chief.
My job is safety, so I would lean against advocating for the golf carts. Now, if the board entertains the thought or entertains the idea of having golf carts, then I think we need to look at things further down the road as far as the safety aspect of it. Make sure that the rules and regulations, make sure we lay out properly, it's not gonna be, I don't want to go rush rush and try to put this thing into place. Just like tonight, I was unaware that it was gonna speak about golf carts, I mean, I will say that Jared at least gave me a heads up that, you know, hey, I'm gonna bring it to the board, so I did do a little bit of research prior to. But, you know, it's the safety for me, that's what it boils down to.
Do we think that, like, if we made our penalties for breaking our rules more difficult or stringent, that that might hurt some, you know, like, for instance, if, you know, we talked about, you talked about speeding and how who said the speed limit's a forty, there's gonna be guys that be speeding, guys that be thirty. So if we said that, something like, if you're caught speeding, your golf cart's license is revoked permanently. Like, if we made the punishments.
For the rest of the year.
Pretty heavy-handed, then maybe people would be more respectful or tread more cautiously. You wouldn't recommend a separate speed limit for the golf carts, would you?
No, like, given, given the, what the, what the.
Rules and laws are.
There's a speed limit, but, you know, I mean.
Homer is thirty-five?
I mean, you know.
This ordinance, this ordinance, they couldn't go on the phone.
Right.
So why don't I do this, I'll send you the ordinance that Greg kind of drew up, have you look at it, give you your input?
Yeah. I would break that one, I need to see.
And then if everybody else could look at the ordinance and kind of have some input, and then the next committee of the whole, we can come back together and have a discussion about it. I just wanted to open.
I do have one more question, Chief, and this may be more for great, but let's say the tier point, you know, some people will abide by it, because human condition. So some people won't, and we enact this, and it becomes a huge problem, Chief will go and say cross route four, it, it's becoming a bigger mess than just individual penalties. Is this something we can look at rescinding because it become, I mean, it just blows up, or is the cat out of the bag? I would go with that.
I think once everybody invests in a golf cart and after, after six months, you're like, that was a bad idea.
Minus six grand in the golf.
So there's, if people are, say, you know, several people are cross route four and there becomes a lot of accidents or something like that, that becomes excessive, what, what are the options at that point? You know, and that's, you could amend the ordinance to, maybe not cross route four.
Well, that's, that's currently under books, you cannot cross route four, that's, that's by state statute, you cannot cross route four.
They can't, you can't have a stop.
You can't have a stop, yes. Yes, it has changed.
I stand corrected.
What we've done in certain communities, mine is restricted, the streets you can use it on, so you would be restricted, if that's something that you want to move out. We also have a penalty in there, a progressive penalty where, you know, the, I forget what the actual wording is, but you can have your permit revoked if you have multiple violations. For, it's a yearly permit on renewal, and if you're flagrantly disregarding the ordinance, you have to revoke. These ordinances have done, three of them in different communities, they all, they're all tailored for how the community is set up, because communities are established so.
What, what communities have they been?
Auburn has one, Rochester has one, and then Village of Clear Lake, which is a community of two hundred people, they, they have got one, so those are the three. Although if we've looked at it, we've looked at it in stroke, I mean, several years ago, but I don't believe that they have.
Rev one advantage that we have now, over a few years ago, is we have our adjudication court, so if our officers did have to give someone a ticket, we have the judge, we have the attorney be able to prosecute that and be able to set them on. So we didn't have that passed, so were you gonna turn around and run down to the county building for that every single time? Probably not. But, but at least that's one thing that could, if we do put it in place and the people do get ticketed, we have that in place, then be able to handle it, so that's, that's at least good.
Great, I'm guessing none of those are being looked at being rescinded, correct, at this time?
Well, not, not that I'm aware of, although ATV issue has arisen in Clear Lake, but it wouldn't apply to Chad.
Can I say anything?
When we get to the end.
Okay.
Yep, yep, thank you, Chief. All right, chickens discussion, so what we saw tonight was a great example of the planning and zoning, but when something doesn't get approved by there, so, you know, somebody comes before them. Do they have the final say on that, or do we?
We do, we do.
Right, so why hasn't, when something's declined, what does it come before us with their recommendations that decline it?
Or, or are we're being informed of it?
Yeah, we have, we remember, I was informed by Facebook.
And that was right in the middle of COVID, that was just when it first started, they had that meeting. There was one person that was for it on the planning commission, the rest of them were against it. There wasn't a person to be able to kind of speak in public, their comments were read into it.
Right into it. From my understanding, the person had a significant amount of signatures to allow it. And then the discussion was handled, I mean, that's the type of thing that we should see, I think, and.
Well, they recommended us and then we had to decision.
I'd almost like to recommend a policy to back up to trustee Decker's point about the zoning board report. It would be nice if whenever there is a decision made on zoning order, the, the, the planning commission, because everyone else has like a trustee on it, they can report that. But if there's any action, there should be a report at the next committee of the hall or village board meeting, where that's reported to us during, but during the meeting. But my thought is, is that action of saying no to the chickens is actually our action.
I'm not so sure of that. If it's not in our, if there's, if it strictly says in our book that chickens are not allowed in Chad, does that have to go in front of the planning commission to hold a public hearing?
Is that the, is that by zoning?
Yeah, that's what they were.
Is that, is that, were they looking at a map or a tax amendment to the zoning code? That's our.
I can't remember where that chicken.
I think they were looking for.
The man, the chickens and cows and goats and all that stuff was put into our codified ordinances, but.
And I think they were looking for a variance in that, or heard that, whatever.
Well, it wasn't variance, it had to be a complete flip. The problem that you gotta remember is, is the village, the village has that in there, but every single covenant for a subdivision has that in there that you cannot have chickens. So even if the board voted to allow that.
Correct, most subdivisions would not.
Would not allow them.
But then those subdivisions may bring it up because we allow them, allow chickens and say, well, the village now allows chickens, let's revisit this issue and see what, because not everybody has a homeowners association. A lot of areas do not.
But that doesn't, that, that doesn't stop them from, from not being, being able to have them.
I don't.
If, if there was no homeowners association in your subdivision and your neighbor put chickens in, you can sue him.
I think chickens are a great idea, I think we should look at an ordinance to possibly allow this in the village, and I don't see why we shouldn't. I've never heard of barking chicken, I mean, we allow dogs to bark and make noise, but barking chickens, I haven't heard yet.
Grab a YouTube.
Roosters I have a problem with, chickens I do not.
So if we could at least get the same panel we got from Ryan, from that situation and any other ones that we would have missed, so we can look and have further discussion at the next committee of the whole.
So I'll tell you, I'll tell you what does help, if you want to report out of the planning commission, you've got to, you've got to kind of define what it is you want. The form that they go through with the zoning, all those questions are in state law, and so that format has been defined, you have to do A, B, C, D, E. That's why that one's so clean, because it's defined on, you have to do everything that you want, so if you're looking for something, put your thoughts together on, okay, what are the contents that we want reported out to us? So that, so that they're giving you what you're, what you're looking for.
We want to see everything that they said there, who came to the meeting, what they presented, why, what was the reasoning for saying no or saying yes?
Yeah, so.
All the things that form provided.
You don't have to decide all that today, just kind of put your thoughts together on what that looks like, that's, that's the difference between why the zoning appeals process is a lot cleaner.
What do you got, Greg? Well, I was just asking what the, what the planning commission was reviewing, because it was, it's big, you know, I, I didn't realize, I didn't know. Chickens are prohibitive in our code unless allowed by the zoning code, if the zoning code were to be, and that would go before the zoning board appeals. They would have, not the variation standards that you saw today, they would have very similar reports based on the standards for creating a map.
It would go in front of the zoning board, I thought the planning commission should set the zoning amendment, the zoning.
Subdivision, the contents of the subdivision ordinance.
Right, but, but this would, this is actually in the zoning code and it would be amending, what the definition of practical culture was in the zoning code, it would be amending what in, would be amending.
We'll look at it outside of this debate.
But I didn't think, because the zoning could amend something, they could come back and vote on it later, I thought the planning commission had to do the amendment. And then once that was set, then the zoning board appeals were the ones that listened to it and said, okay.
If there's gonna be a variance or a change.
I, yeah, well, I think, look at it tomorrow, we'll look at it, okay, but I, I think that was the reason I took it through the planning commissions, because they have to set what the zoning board of appeals then.
Here's.
Here's, they can't set their own rules and then turn around and, and vote. With respect to those other, with the respect to those other committees in the report that we'd like to see from you, I'll leave that, if you guys want to send me any suggestions about coverage and then I'll try to incorporate it all together and everything, so, if that makes sense or not.
Thank you. Okay, in our discussion. Except that they don't part.
We're gonna revisit that in two weeks, correct, the chickens?
No.
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand why the chickens discussion was on here if we weren't discussing chickens.
Well, the process to where we can discuss it, we haven't received anything from anybody, I mean, we can make, I mean, can we just make an ordinance that says we love chickens?
Well, we can, that's what the village for, I mean, if there's interest in discussion, you can create an ordinance that you want chickens. It doesn't take Joe Smith or Bob Smith to come here and say, I want chickens.
Wouldn't it have to go through planning and zoning?
I thought it did, I thought it had one through.
So it could still go through them, but we can overturn the prohibition in Chad, is what I'm saying.
Right, so the petition for that, would it then come from this board or from the electors seeking a, a tax amendment to the zone, chicken zone?
So how about this, I propose that we push it back to the planning commission to have another hearing, it's a little further out of COVID, that was in COVID, many people, maybe outside of. Planning and zoning. Greg, where does it belong?
That's what, that's what they're gonna figure out.
We can figure that out. We're gonna recommend, is everybody okay with recommending pushing it back to whoever it belongs to?
Yes. Yes.
A better report.
Because it was, primarily because it was killed before it was ever brought to us for even having the discussion. If regardless of what the decision was, we never weighed in on either way or had a clue that it was even being discussed.
Is there any other issue that was decided on and not went to us during the company?
Create all those, the way the planning commission.
You know, all of those, all of those agendas are on Word docs and all of the meeting minutes are on Word docs. So if you'd like to know what went on and how it handled, they're all right there, every clerk at every meeting.
I understand that, Pat, but still, in any, any organization that has subcommittees, you know, the main committee would either refer things down to a subcommittee and there would always be a report back to the committee. That committee's roles would not entail always just reading the minutes, there would always be a report back up to the main committee and that's get it to board.
That doesn't miss the standard here, Chad.
Well, we need to break the standard there, but like Chapman Gerger said, we found out through Facebook, not through you, that this happened, and that's how we need to find out. Not through Facebook.
Greg, we have an consensus to move it back to whoever you decided to move to move back to, and you think it is planning now?
Because this was not brought, this was not one person asking for chickens, this was. Because this was not brought in for, this was not one person asking for chickens, this was, this is a village wide, we're going to allow chickens in R1. Question, and that, that would go to the planning.
Okay.
And the planning commission, what they will do is they should take in all evidence and then prepare a report for this.
Thank you.
And Darlene, you said three hundred signatures?
Kind of close to that, yes.
Okay, so it's not just one person wanting it, it's close to three hundred.
Right.
All right, thank you, Greg. And now we're to you, Greg. Another manager.
Most of the topics I was going to talk on, we've already talked about tonight. We had a few, uh, employees that, uh, have had to go get tested, but no one has come up positive. We, uh, we're on, uh, CWLP one for a while, uh, we're back on, uh, South Sane and everything seems to be working well. They kept up all week long during that hot stretch and over the weekend, so I think they've got their problems with their wells taken care of out there. And, uh, that's about it.
About the chloramine situation.
Have a herbal chloramine.
Well, if, for the utility commission, if you could have an update from, we, you know, for, by the twentieth, probably nothing.
They might be faced, you can ask them, they might be facing the same thing, their, their last step is the company that did it wasn't sending people on site to do the work, so.
Right. Okay, public property in our creation, many discussions.
Last night you talked about, um, you know, the potential golf cart, there was a resident that showed up again to, to, uh, suggest that we look at alternative locations for that. He does not want a New Yorkian house, thinks that we should be able to buy some land out in the middle of nowhere and put, put one there. Um, Buffalo Garden installed, I think another one was looking to be installed, so. That was at the, um.
Butterfly garden?
Yes.
Oh. Now we got buffalo to worry about.
We saw, we saw on the picture, are those against the zone?
Butterfly.
What is the first one?
My son, well, then, flying flowers.
Yeah. Um, where's that first one installed?
It's near the.
Is it the boys? Cemetery, it's around the cemetery, Eagle Scout project done at the cemetery.
Yeah, and there were other groups that, there's another group that installed one on the south side of the library, if I understand correctly. Also, pretty cool, go check them out. Uh, again, some concerns about the light path, that there are paths in disrepair and we need to address that. And again, the priorities that we had identified earlier and I shared with this board, those staying, golf cart being number one. Uh, most interested thing that we like to look for, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you, thank you, new. Our utility oversight committee discussion, we will have it the twentieth of July at seven P M. Any public comments on that?
Chairman, Chairman, or before you go too far, uh, Mike Southworth and Commissioner Bloom had reported in that they completed the bond refinancing that was underway at the South Sane Water Commission. Uh, which, given all that was going on, was kind of a stunning feat to pull off. Uh, but they were able to get the twenty-eight and a half million dollar, um, general obligation bond sold and priced. And that net savings over twenty years is three point two million dollars that they saved in that transaction. And the key is, we discussed, uh, prior to that, the debt service that they pay this year is now level. So they have no more ramp, uh, and no more upswing in that, so that was goal one. Uh, when we talked about that before any of the market upheaval, they were looking at the potential three point three million, and they got to three point two on a refinancing. Pretty impressive feat that was pulled off in the middle of all that.
One last item that I forgot, the pickleball courts, if there's any questions, sorry.
Not to dismiss the three point two million dollar savings, but.
There is a crack in the pickleball courts, but. We need to consider those, so. Anyway, I just forgot about it, the three, three million dollar thing.
I, I do have a question on that three point two million, so, and that's, now down the road, if they borrow more money, the three point two million dollar savings is not really a three point two million dollar savings because they're borrowing more on top of it.
Their total out, cash outflow in their current position versus where it was prior to this transaction is three point two million dollars less. At any point in time, if anybody borrows more for anything, obviously numbers change, but.
Exactly.
On, on one day, they were here, and for the next twenty years, they were going to pay three point two million dollars more.
But as you see with this water commission, they like to borrow money, so.
I can't recall the last time they borrowed.
To that point, so if they never borrow up any more money, basically there would never be another increase.
The way, the way I will phrase this strategically is the debt service portion of those existing bonds has been levelized.
They will not cause an increase. Huh? They will not cause an increase like it was going, but there could be an increase.
Does that make more sense? That portion, that portion of the, great, okay.
All right, public comics, Darlene?
Well, I just had a comment on the golf cart.
Sure.
The part that doesn't scare me is the fact that the golf cart can go twenty miles an hour. It's the fact that the car behind the golf cart can go far faster and gets very aggravated because that golf cart is in front of them. And they will go around them, and who knows what can happen when that car goes around. I don't know how the chief addresses that or how that's even, you know, addressed at all. That's my concern, because yes, I know I'm in a golf cart and I'm on the public street, and that's what scares me about the golf cart.
Dude, I grew up. He's right behind you.
I can't see that.
She, she not saying in chat. She not saying in chat. For the.
I mean, I'm not against the golf cart.
Statue of Liberty.
But you know. That scares me because, I mean, just like the fellow who wants a stop sign on his street because everybody speeds down the street. Well, there's a golf cart in front of them, that's just going to make the aggravation more. I think, you know, kids signs, you know, slow, you know, children playing or, you know, she definitely put up, but.
I think bikes are similar to that though, when that dickman travels faster than the car and sometimes it's.
And it's, I mean, you know yourself how it's going behind bike, bikeless, that, uh, you know, you wish you could get around and you can't.
Can't we just ride the bike lanes?
Yeah.
I, I made a face and you have no idea what face it was.
Yeah, that's the boat about. Thank you, um, all right, um, scheduled meetings, planning commission, six P M, maintenance hall, July sixteen. Six P M, uh, utility oversight subcommittee, uh, if you just want, seven P M. July twentieth, village board, six P M, maintenance hall, July twenty eighth. Seven P M, and police mission meeting, September sixteen, twenty twenty five, seven P M. We do have a reason to go into a closed session, is a number two C one.
Two C one, yes, personnel.
Under two C one, under personnel, and I have a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Trusty Decker is second especially, Trusty Churchill, and we will, uh, we want to come back together to a turn after this.
You, you need a roll call though.
Yep, so we need a roll call before we want to.
Trusty Major.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Trusty Mal.
Yes.
Trusty Decker.
Yes.
Trusty Ger.
Yes.
Trusty Sher.
Okay, given the circumstances we're in, and the normal room that we would use for this is very small and cramped, and we cannot social distance in there. So at this point, what we're going to ask is for everybody to vacate this room so that we can continue to spread ourselves out of the, uh, Chairman Gerger mentioned the fact there is no additional business that will be undertaken after the closed session. We're going to shut the video off, we won't restart it.